Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting of the Planning Board to order. It is Thursday, April 22nd, 2021 at 7:00 PM. This is a remote meeting. And in accordance with the Governor's order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20 relating to the 2020 novel coronavirus outbreak emergency. The April 20th, I'm sorry, April 22nd, 2021 public meeting of the Planning Board shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. However, to view this meeting in progress, please go to facebook.com/BlakeCam. You do not need a Facebook account to view the meeting. This meeting will be recorded and available to view viewed at a later date at www.lakecam.tv. I'd like to take a minute to remind everybody to remain muted until they're called on by the Chair to speak. And please do not speak until the Chair yields you the floor. And for a matter of formality, for a minute keeping. In attendance tonight for the Planning Board, I have myself present Mark Knox. Barbara Mankowski is present. Peter Conroy is present and Jack Lynch is present. For the record, Michelle McEckern is not present. Clerk Kathy Murray is present. And so everybody else that's present, I would ask you. When it's your turn to speak and you're presenting, please state your name and or property address that you're representing. At this time, the first item on our agenda is a site plan review continued for 15 Main Street. Presented by Niles Zager of Zenith Consulting Engineers. Niles, would you like to speak right away or would you like me to go first?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Actually, I can't. If you don't mind, I'd like to just kind of give somewhat of an update and of what's been presented and then you obviously allow you to, if you want to add in.
Go right ahead.
So since the last meeting, we have provided additional revised site plans. And basically what they've done is they've they've incorporated the majority of the change or of all the changes that we've discussed at the last meeting. One being the fire lane, the 10-foot striped fire lane and the removal of the no parking signs. And also the addition of the additional landscaping that was discussed at the last meeting as well. That all has been incorporated in this updated site plan set that I believe was sent out. And hopefully, the all the board members have received. And then we have made a few other changes. As far as fire is concerned, one that one being a fire hydrant was added into the site. At the basically just upgrading of the entrance from Main Street into the building. That was a that was a request of the Fire Chief. We did meet at the last meeting. I did mention that we were going to be meeting with with Chief. And we did meet with him about two weeks ago on a Friday morning. And went over the site plans and his concerns. And he basically, and I believe he did provide an email, an email form. Basically stating that what we provided to him is adequate. And I'll let you obviously add on to that, but although he did mention that he doesn't love the the idea of the project. He said that it does meet all the codes and he's he's happy and he thinks actually the fire lane is above and beyond what the what the code says. So he says he's happy with that at least. And the hydrant is above and beyond what is required as well. He just felt as though it would be easier for his, you know, his crew, his department to be able to find a time of of an emergency would be much easier to find and try to track one down or spot one on Main Street. The only other change was to the drainage basin in the rear of the property. We moved the access berm, the access area of the basin outside of the residential zone that's located up back there. That way, there's no work at all in the residential zone. And we also relocated the outlet structure. There's an outlet covert out of that infiltration basin that we moved outside of that area as well. So as far as changes goes, that's that's really about it. The plans that you see before you are, you know, in our opinion, everything up to date. And you know, everything that we've discussed. And be happy to answer any questions that the board has on it.
So at this time, would any planning board members like to speak to this? Peter?
I'll go first, Mark. So I guess with the latest plans, there's still no plan for a gate, security gate, correct?
That's correct.
And there's there's in the foreseeable future, there won't be a gate at all. Because in my opinion, if you're thinking about doing a gate, those those should be in this right now. You know what I mean? But if you're not going to do one, then that's fine. But I don't think it should be added post-site plan review without coming back before us.
Through the Chair, Mr. Conroy Bowman, the applicant. We did go back and forth with this. And at this time, there's no anticipation of a gate after touring several facilities. It's pretty common not to have a gate in this type of facility because it is all of two thirds of it is internal. So I think it has adequate security measures. And the more properties that I tour, the more comfortable I am not installing a gate. So I don't have any plans or a budget line item at this time to install a gate.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Barbara, would you like to?
Um. No, no significant comments at this time, Mark. I'll wait till you get further along.
Okay, I just was trying to look through my email. We did receive a letter from Council. Regarding, there were some questions. I'll paraphrase, but in short, excuse me, it was one of the reasons I think, Niles, you guys removed the retention basin from the residential zoning was because no part of the workings of the business property could be within the residential district. But it does, in Council's opinion, meet the zoning requirements. And I know there was another question we asked, and again, I apologize for not trying to.
Excuse me? A lot coverage?
Yes, that's that's it. Thank you. So the residential portion of the property can be used towards the lot coverage requirements. So it is within the 50%. It does not require a waiver for lot coverage. So that's pretty much it in a nutshell. I mean, if we go through to recommend approval for the site plan, I just think we need to make sure that the the exterior lighting, the signage, all those things are, you know, made note on the plan that they'll be compliant with Lakeville's bylaws. Anything else you'd like to add in, Barbara?
Michelle submitted some some written requests, some questions she had. Is the Fire Chief present on the call tonight? O'Brien, I think he sent an email anyway.
Did.
Yeah, he did. The email is part of our packet tonight. Actually, I could read that.
Okay. She was interested in ADA access. Does the property include ADA access aside from the one handicap space?
Yes, it does. It has the one the one handicap space. You're required one handicap van accessible space for up to a 25 space parking area, and then it goes up from there. And then there is accessibility, handicap accessibility into the office space as well.
Okay, so into the storage units. So somebody in a wheelchair would be able to use the facility?
Yes, that's correct. The internal units and the external units.
Okay. Um, okay. I think that's it.
To the ADA thing, not that it's our business, but I just a curious thing. You have three floors there. And my understanding is if you have access where the public can go, you need to provide ADA access. Do you have an elevator or no?
There's two elevators in the building.
You do? Okay.
Okay, that's good.
I have the comments from the Chief. It's sort of informal, but again, in short, the the fire lanes and turning radius is acceptable and compliant. And he sort of followed up with, I am in favor of the painted fire lanes as described in the April 8th meeting. And here's no restrictions from him at this time. From Chief O'Brien. So if nobody else has anything, I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of the site plan for 15 Main Street. With the stipulation that it comply with all stated or unstated bylaws for the town of Lakeville.
Mark, could I could I add something to that that we received the will will serve letters from Taunton Water for both municipal water and fire?
So moved in amended the motion.
And then I'll second that.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Barbara?
No, opposed. No, opposed.
Peter?
I.
Jack?
I.
Motion carries with a majority. Barbara, would you like to state why you were opposed for the record?
Yeah, I just, I feel like it's it's not a good fit. For what may meet the bylaws, the rules and regulations, you know, the specific bylines or we just haven't had a three-story storage unit in Lakeville. And I don't think it's what the community is looking for, and it's just tough. It's just tough to approve that. So that's where I stand on that issue.
My only concern about, you know, the self-storage is any of these clients can bring in God knows what into these units and have it stored in there. I think that's my concern.
So we can move on now. Let's move to the next agenda item. It's been approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
All right, the next item on our agenda is site plan review for 56 Main Street. Presented by William Mohan.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Bill Mohan, Licensing and Permanent Consultant. Working this evening with SNL Pizza, Inc. And Sarah and Luis are with us, the owners of the franchise. This is their second Domino's franchise. We went through this last year ago, January in Auburn. And that has worked out very, very well. And we're hoping that Lakeville is is the same. I do want to take a moment to thank the people at Town Hall and the different offices in Lakeville. They have been enormously supportive and helpful and patient with us. And that, of course, includes Kathy and Fran Lawrence and Nate Darling and Assistant Fire Chief Will Purcell. They've all been very, very helpful. So we are appreciative of their help with that. We are moving into the extreme left side of the Dollar Tree Plaza. Most of the the technical stuff with is already been been done and approved when when Dollar Tree was was constructed. And so a lot of the application was just just taken right from from Dollar Tree. We are, as I said, looking to to build a Domino's Pizza. We are looking to and we will be appearing before the Zoning Board of Appeals on on May 20th for what Lakeville is calling a drive-through. Domino's calls it a drive-up window, but I guess if it looks like a duck and walks like a duck, it's a duck. But there's a there's an important difference here, too. With the drive-up and again, the town rightfully is concerned about traffic backup and congestion and so on and so forth. That doesn't happen with Domino's. We're not Dunkin' Donuts. We're not McDonald's. You don't have 10, 12-car backups, you know. It's it's a window. You don't you do not have a menu board in the back where you can talk to somebody inside and place your order and and then come up to the window and pay for it and so on and so forth. It can take two, three, four minutes per customer. The customer in order to come up to the drive-up window has already ordered. They've already paid. They're just there to pick it up. And so they drive up, give them the name, here's your order, thank you, good night. And maybe 30 seconds, maybe a minute. But and plus the fact you're dealing with Domino's Pizza where the overwhelming majority of our business is delivery. So they're not even coming to the store. Right now, there are no seats and chairs planned for for this franchise because we have very few. Now, if we see that 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 suddenly, you know, half of the customers at Dollar Tree are going to come here for lunch or something like that. We may have to put on a table in a couple of chairs, but but that's not planned for right now. we have submitted all of the documents. We submitted all the applications. We have paid all of the fees. And we will we will deal with with the with the signage. There will be signs directing the an entrance sign, an exit sign on Route 105. There'll be an interest sign on what is that Ebony Farm Road. Both of the entrances, people will be directed along the right side of the Dollar Tree and around the back. So they're coming up right aside of the building for that drive-up window. We will have a dumpster out back that we will be contracting to be emptied once or twice a week, depending on what the size of the dumpster we have and and the business involved. We will have a dumpster while we're constructing. Michael Reed is our contractor. And now we try to make that a local company or as close to being a local company as possible. I like to to deal with local businesses as well. And that'll be emptied on a regular basis. I'm open to any questions that you might have regarding this this application. And I'll let you do some talking or asking. Be happy.
Thank you, Mr. Mohan. I have several questions and just things that I'd like to state.
Sure.
But first, Sarah and Louise, I wish you the best in all your business ventures. It's nice to see people with the entrepreneurialship efforts. So I do wish you luck.
Thank you so much.
So I'm glad you brought up the drive-through thing. And my feeling on that is that the Planning Board needs to make a recommendation to the Zoning Board of Appeals tonight for that drive-through pickup window. And Mr. Mohan, I just want to explain why we do this is it is a special permit, but if it's granted in perpetuity, your business sounds ideal that it's not going to have the backup out onto Ebony Farms Circle or Road. But if with land use, a similar business can move into that space. Restaurant, takeout, and they may have a different drive-through capacity. So that could, a different business could cause that backup. So our recommendation, I I feel, should be to condition the special permit to not be transferable to other tenants without them having to go back for a new special permit for a different tenant to get a drive-through.
We would agree to that.
Access. Because again, the Planning Board's job is vehicular and pedestrian safety and flow. And again, to your point, I understand the drive-through will not cause 25 cars in a row and back out into Main Street. And that's what we want. That's good. So again, you understand where we're coming from. That that property itself, the building, has been not contentious, but the outside lights have been a concern to some of the abutters. And I'm under the impression you guys may be adding some outside lighting if needed or if your signage has lights. We need to make sure that all of your lights comply with Lakeville's Night Sky Lighting Bylaw.
Right.
Let's see, is one of the other concerns that we have, and I think this is more of a question for Mr. Benoit. You're dividing a space that was previously approved. And you're using it basically for the use that it was approved, but you're leaving now a third space that really wasn't part of the original design and approval. So our concerns become not with you, but there may not be another site plan review. And we need to make sure that the handicapped parking and all the access for ADA requirements is still met with that third tenant. So again, I think I saw on the plan that you have three parking spaces. And we need to make sure that that will suffice with the third tenant that doesn't exist or that you would then make the parking compliant when they do exist, when a third tenant does exist. And then you brought up signage and same thing that the signage would all need to comply with the town's sign bylaw.
Exactly. That will happen.
So at this point, do any other planning board members have anything they'd like to state or speak to on this? Peter?
Yes, so do we can they share the screen and show the 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 site plan review of how the building is or is that not possible tonight?
Do you have the ability to do that, Mr. Mohan?
I do not.
Because my concern is, and I looked at it briefly in the emails, but there's no doors exiting what will be the new tenant space onto the side where the drive-through will be passing. Is that correct? All doors are straight out front towards Main Street?
Yes, that's correct. And there are there are some doors on the back. But that that's for, you know, taking out the trash or an emergency exit if the if a second egress is needed. That is is possible.
Okay. And then another question I have about the drive-up system. Is this already in operation at a lot of Domino's?
That's the that's the newest thing now nationwide, and it's extraordinarily popular. Because it's so quick.
An app on your phone or something?
What's that?
Is it through an app on your phone that you order?
Yeah, Dunkin' Donuts app. If you don't have one, you should get one soon. But it's you you do everything on the phone. I mean, it's just if you're driving home from work and say, well, let's get a pizza. Let's get some, you know, salad, chicken, the other things that 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 we serve. Chicken with the salad. We don't sort of serve. But it's you you order it on the phone. You pick it up on the way and you bring home a hot meal.
I guess my question is more towards when somebody comes to the building and they enter into like a line or some some companies call it a queue to pick up their stuff and they get to the window and their stuff isn't ready, but the guy behind them is. What then? Do you tell them?
They're instructed to park and come into the store.
Okay, all right. And then you'll serve the next person and.
Exactly, exactly.
This this next question may sound foolish, but it's actually, I think it's a good question. Do you have issues with people who might be driving extremely small cars? And you go to hand them a giant pizza box out the window? I think it's a legitimate concern. And then, you know, they're they're opening their doors.
You've been watching our commercials. We know that.
Does it happen? And then what? You know, do you say, oh?
If we have if we have to, if we have to, if that's the case, we'll we'll ask the 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 driver to bring the car up to the front. And we'll come out with the order and put it in the car.
Okay.
I mean, I can ask one question, Peter. I don't want to cut you off. You can have the floor back. Mr. Mohan, do you have in the plan, I'm looking at the site plan that was originally provided. And it shows some arrows for the the drive-through that was originally proposed. Are you proposing any signage to direct traffic related specifically to the pickup window?
Yes, that's that's you you will see when when you look at the collection of of pages that Ballo has has prepared. All of the sites on the site plan where a sign is going to be located or on the building is labeled on that on that plan. There will be basically the Domino's signs, there'll be one on the front, right under Dollar Tree, the Dollar Tree sign. And there'll be one on the front front entrance of at the roof of the store. All of the others are dealing with directing traffic around the right side of Dollar Tree and around the back. There'll be a couple of signs that do not enter. It's going to be tempting to, you know, come down that that left side and just make a U-turn and come back up the you know, we're going to have a do not enter sign there to to instruct people that the pickup window is to come around the back of the building and up the the side so that you are picking up your order on the driver's side. So there is a total of 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 8 different locations where there will be some type of Domino's sign to direct the traffic around on and identify the Domino's there with a with a drive-up window. And when we when we say signs, a couple are going to be attached to the to the back of the building to keep the the flow, the traffic moving. This is the way to the the window. There'd be a couple on the front and enter and entrance, entrance and exit sign. And there'd be a like sign on Ebony Farm Road as you enter from that street.
Barbara?
I'd like to ask, are those signs illuminated? I presume they are. They have to show at night.
Yes, interior, they're interior lighting. It's it's low and not offensive.
It doesn't broadcast lumens. It's backlit.
Right.
Yep. We like those.
Yeah, good.
Peter?
Mark, could the could Brandon from the sign company, could he share his screen with regards to the signs? Is that possible?
I was going to suggest.
Thank you.
For you guys. See if I have access to that. All right, can you all see the screen?
Yes.
Hello.
Yep.
Move you guys out of the way real quick. All right, so I'm just going to start at the site plan, the last page, just so you guys kind of have an overview of where everything. Uh, of where everything um, is going, just so you can kind of picture. Uh, as I walk or as we per se drive around the building. Um, so obviously you see Main Street here and then uh, over here is the side road. Uh, and it shows a tractor trailer uh, as of driving around this for uh, for access and space. Um, but I will uh, start back here up at item A, um, which is. Uh, it's gonna go over the main entry. Uh, it's just a set of channel letters uh, and logo, uh, their combination, their standard. Said that you guys would see everywhere. Uh, following that um, would be a top um, that we would be installing on uh, the existing pylon sign. Uh, the existing pylon sign was made of one face uh, of Lexan, as you guys are familiar with. So we'll just be applying a digital print. Uh, over uh, the existing piece of Lexan. Item C, um, so uh, referencing from the top view down, this would be behind the building. Um, behind this transformer is one of the uh, exterior egress doors uh, from the rear of the building. Uh, so as it shows direction around uh, backside says do not enter, uh, as Mr. Mohan uh, had described. Uh, item D, so this is on the side of the building here. Um, so this is where the pickup. Uh, side of it, again, on the other side, uh, it's going to be uh, illuminated with do not enter as well. Uh, so it's uh, able to be seen at night. Uh, bouncing to the main entrance here, um, we have a small uh, enter uh, and exit. Uh, sign um, that will be putting by uh, the entryway. And then to identify uh, that back entrance to try to guide people around that way as much as possible. Uh, we're going to be putting a uh, a pickup uh, sign. Um, that's going to be uh, three by three, uh, hopefully attract. Um, the people who are coming to pick up pizzas to go around that way, just to eliminate more congestion around the front of the building. Uh, so that was uh, where this came into play. Uh, and kind of as Mr. Mohan was was saying, we wanted to. Um, provide a package um, for for you guys and um, for for our friends at Domino's that would. Uh, allow um, like the min- the most minimal amount of um. Uh, of of uh, negative effect on the community, but also um, have have a positive enough. Um, amount of signs where we could direct people around, move people around as best as we could. Uh, and this is the package that we decided to come up with. Um, and uh, so then this was the final sign here. Um, this was just a domino tile uh, on the side of the building. Um, just another way to uh, attract uh, passerbyers as they're approaching the building. And then back to the site plan here, just for you guys reference. Um, so I can, I can go over, uh, so item F over here by the back entrance. That was the uh, this directory sign that I was saying that would direct people around the backside. That's, that was our goal for that one. Item C was on the backside pointing around. Uh, item D was where to pick up. Item G. The domino tile to try to attack, attract people from Main Street coming from uh, One Direction. Item A was the front sign uh, that showed their storefront that located their uh, main identification, their main entryway. Uh, item B uh, is the vinyl pylon sign and then E one and E two are small uh, enter and exit. Uh, little monuments. And when I say small, um, they were uh, rather small, like I mentioned, to try to. Try to not have a a a massive impact. Um, on on the area, can see, see down here the dimensions. That that has an overall height of three foot six, uh, including the base, so. Uh, we we decided to keep those small. Thank you.
Mark, could I ask a question of Brandon before he uh, checks out?
Go ahead.
Hi, uh, Brandon, uh, can you go to item F? Uh, the uh, that's the side. This is on, so this is on.
Yeah, Ebony Farm Road.
Correct, correct. So this is almost like a reversed photograph, is it, you know, uh, so it'd be actually going left um. Into the parking lot, correct?
Main Street is um, on the opposite side of the sign.
Yeah, you're, you're correct. It's code, that's the entrance into the parking lot.
Is that sign lit? And that sign's illuminated?
Yes, it is.
What? Could, is it possible to make this sign so that it's not illuminated on the backside towards Ebony Farm? I I don't see it as how it would um, hinder your business at all. And I think the residents of Ebony Farm Road would appreciate that. It 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 would just be one side only. Uh, the people coming in from Main Street that way, y- you don't, you know, this. The people down on Ebony Farm Road, they'll know Domino's is there. They don't need the um, they don't need the sign, so.
Understood, yes. Um, uh, that is something that uh, can be set up. Uh, all signs that we do are totally custom, so. Uh, if that's something that's uh, recommended and suggested, uh, that is something that we could definitely do.
I think it's necessary, but I'll ch- I'll yield to the rest of the board if they have any thoughts.
Well, um, I will second Pete's opinion. I mean, I think the. Um, the signage, our community needs a new signage by law. That's just the way it is. We really have to do something about. The rules around our signage. I I think this signage is, does not fit in with our rural character. Um. I think it's too visible for the community. We have an over fifty-five community that's on Eb- at the edge of, end of Ebony Farm Road. Um. They certainly don't need any more lights or traffic on that road. Um. I mean, I'm I'm not in favor of a drive through, so I'll just come out and say that. I I think it's, it's not really in character with the community. On what we've been looking to do. Um, and and that's just kind of where I stand on that issue. So between signage and and drive through. Uh, those are my two big barriers.
So the, you do have the one domino tile on the left hand corner of the building. I believe that that one would put you in violation of the sign by law because you're allowed. Two signs, the one on the front of the building and then the common directory sign at the road. All the other signs need to be traffic directory signs in order to not have to comply. Uh, so I think that that one. Either you need a special permit from zoning board of appeals or it's just not allowed.
Yeah, so to speak off that, um, we had submitted um, our packages for uh, permit approval to the building inspector. Um, and I had just found out recently that either himself or someone in his office had um, come down with COVID, so they're very far behind. So we haven't received it um, written or verbal uh, denial or feedback uh, on on those submittals. Uh, so we're still waiting on that. And then Mr. Mohan uh, notified me yesterday about uh, this meeting, so we wanted to join in and and. Present as best as we could to assist here.
Yeah, no, and and we're glad you're here. Um, you know, it's a good presentation. I just. I I'm not trying to be critical of of anything you've done as much as just, like I say, from a business standpoint, I'm a local businessman and. I'm allowed. You know, one sign out by the road that's a certain size and you can put one sign on the building. Uh. But. Beyond that, they um, they become in violation of the sign by law. So I think that that one puts it over the top. And a- and again, you can wait until you get response from the building uh, department. Uh, cause he would certainly provide clarity to that.
Now, if that mean, if that means the sign comes down, the sign comes down. We're not going to be in violation. Of of any local ordinance.
Yep.
Uh, Mark is, uh, I would, I would think that this building here. In the way the Domino's is proposing its uh, drive through, there's not going to be any problem with the. If, you know, fire equipment access like we talked about over at the self. Storage unit. That looks like there's plenty of access, right?
Yeah, there is.
Yeah, they have sufficient um, vehicle.
Right.
Um. They show the fire truck going through there or the?
Yeah, I think Brandon, you know, Brandon talked about the the trailer truck going through, so that would seem to be. Is sufficient, you know, access for, you know, you know, the, for the fire equipment to go through. Yeah, my only other comment about uh. You know, the the drive through, I would think that a drive through would be less congestive. Than people coming in and parking and going in and out. And I think you get a lot of people parking and moving and then this, I think that. That that if it's simply a drive through, they they come in, they drive through, they pick up their pizza, it's already paid for and they go. So I think, you know, the congestion would be a lot less. That's what little I know about drive through.
And that's the only, that's, that's one of the reasons why we we opted to have that sign F. Uh, on uh, Ebony Farm Road. It's just to let, let. Customers know they don't have to drive through this parking lot to get around the back of the building. There's, there's an easier way and it's less congestion in the front of the building. Uh, so that's the only reason I was there. Uh, and uh, uh, again, uh. It's easy enough as uh, as Brandon said, it's easy enough to make sure that that there's no light. Projecting back down uh, Ebony Farm Road. Uh, that's not a problem.
Okay. Alright, um, Brandon, would you mind unsharing your screen? So we go back to.
Yep. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, Barbara, are you good? Peter, you're good?
I I do have a question. Uh, in one of the pictures, uh, I don't know if they have a picture of the backside of the building, but could they show? If they don't, that's fine. I could actually drive by there myself at some point. But there's a large transformer back there. I was curious as to. Um, if there's, and and maybe the building owner would know, Mr. Benoit, maybe he'd know if there's ballards that protect that transformer right now. Because uh, obviously quite a few more cars are going to travel back there now than with Dollar Tree. And and how far it is from the lane that that'll be back there.
You want me to address that?
If you could, that would be great, sir.
So there, there aren't ballots there presently, uh, balls, I guess, balls of ballots, but um. We have the uh, the ability to do that. But presently there are not.
Okay. How 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 far a distance would you say the uh, from, if everyone stays in their lane and is pulling up orderly? From their cars to that transformer, would you say?
I would say approximately twenty. Feet plus or minus. Because there's, there is a, there is a picture. That someone showed earlier. Um, that transformer is. Is um, outside the back utility door. And from that transformer to the edge of the pavement, uh, where cars would come around the back of the building is about twenty feet.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, there's a lot of, there's a lot of room back there.
Alright, I thought it was closer than that. Thanks.
I have a photo that I can share. I'm just working on getting it to this computer if you guys would like.
Yep, go ahead.
If I hold that up, oh, okay, he's done it. He's got it, alright.
This is the backside of the building. Dumpsters are here. This door over here is where the Domino's rear is. Um, that sign will be mounted around this area here. Uh, and that's where that transformer is. I can zoom in on it here. And this is, looks like a rock bed. And that's how far away that transformer is from that traffic that would be uh, revolving around the back of the building.
That's fine, that's fine by me. Thanks, thanks for getting that.
Yep, no problem.
Alright, Barbara, would you like to make any comments on the signs? I know you you already did speak a little bit to it, but as far as a condition or any?
I'm gonna recommend we don't, you know, I I'd like to make a motion that we don't. Recommend approval for a drive through um, to the ZVA. And I don't know if I'll have anybody second that motion, but. Uh, that's just how I feel about the issue. I I don't think we need to drive through at that property and I I. I think that the residents on the backside of that property don't need any more traffic on that street.
Does anybody else feel the same way?
No.
I mean, I don't have a problem with the drive through the way that it's set up. I think it could be worse, but I understand Barbara's concerns.
I do, I do too. Uh, Mark, if I could talk for one second, Barbara, I I I do agree with you to some degree, but. We, we knew about a drive through when we permitted this building originally. They, that was always like a uh, they, that was discussed. Um, when they first showed us the Dollar Tree, that there was going to be a drive through at the end. I I'm not saying that that's okay. I'm just saying, um. That was how they presented it to us when they first built the building, so.
Yep. Didn't like it then.
Yeah, well, at least you consistent.
That's it.
That was in.
What are you looking at?
Plan itself, um, in our packet, it's June of two thousand eighteen when that was uh.
Two thousand eighteen.
Alright, so. I'd like to make a motion. To uh. Recommend approval. With the conditions that all signs must be compliant with the Lakeville sign by law. All handicapped parking and access for all three business units in that property must remain. ADA requirements. Any additional lights, if any, outside the building must comply with the lighting by law for Lakeville. Um. You make the sign. Uh, on the Ebony Farms. Entrance. Uh, not illuminated, not illuminated on the back of the sign. Facing Ebony Farms residences. Um, and that along with. The. Drive through that the planning board make a recommendation for the zoning board. To condition the special permit. Not to be transferable to any other tenants and that the zoning board. Uh, add any other conditions. To make sure that traffic does not grow uh, in a queue longer than uh, the parking area allowed.
I'll second that, Mark.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. All in favor? Barbara?
No.
Peter?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
And I, motion carries with the majority. Uh, let the record show that Barbara was opposed.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. We appreciate your time in this matter. And uh.
You're welcome. And uh, again, to Sarah and Louise, good luck with your business venture.
Thank you, I appreciate.
Have a good night.
Thank you also.
Send pizza.
Alright, I'm just. Going back and forth here. Next item on our agenda. Is Julia's Way Release of Covenant Update. Kathy, do you have something on that or is Attorney O'Shaughnessy gonna speak to that? Alright.
That you some, what Amy had said? It was like in a sep- separate packet.
Looking. Okay.
You you have it?
I'm trying to navigate four different things here now. Alright, so. I'm sorry. Julia's Way. Attorney O'Shaughnessy has submitted the attached documents in regards to the definitive subdivision of Julia's Way. The board would like to know what, if anything else, needs to be done before they sign the Form F. And in red council's response. Did a reviewing engineer approve the roadway? If so. That should be attached to the Form F prior to signing. So the board can be assured all work under the covenant decision and subdivision rules and regulations was done. Uh, so Mike, do you have anything? From?
Um, I I guess I'm a little confused. Do you, you want something from uh, the the contractors?
I I guess I'm a little confused. Do you you want something from the contractors engineer or? The towns engineer?
I I guess good point. I'm I'm sure that's something that that's the town's responsibility. So was was that ever done by the town, Kathy? Do we have record of that? Because I don't.
This is a private way, isn't it, Mike?
It is, yeah.
Yeah, so we would. I think last time we talked about having it reviewed and because it's a private way. We don't have to have it. It doesn't have to be adopted. So.
So she's not saying it's required. She's just saying it should be attached if it was done. So it wasn't done. So we can't attach it. Done.
I mean, if if if. I I can ask the. The developer to get a statement from his engineer who designed it to say it's in compliance and and get that to you guys, but helps.
Yeah, I guess that would be a nice little because we didn't. You know. Force you to have a review engineer do that if you could just have a letter sent by the. The contractor that built it that says that it does comply and then we'll attach that to the format and sign it and get it done.
Yeah, I I can do that. That's.
That makes sense to the rest of the board because it is a private way.
Good idea.
Okay. So. Can we take action on this tonight so that we can? Expedite the process because I'm sure how old is this? Other than too old, Mike.
Uh, it's it's only it's only two or three years. Oh, for the filing. Oh, it's only a couple of weeks. I mean, if if you guys want to. Delay it for to your next meeting. I'm okay with that, and I could get the letter to you in the meantime, but I have no issue with that.
Okay, why don't you do that then?
Yeah.
Get us the letter. We'll have it attached. We'll vote on it at the next meeting. Kathy, you keep it on the agenda. And we'll vote to. Sign it at that point.
That's fine. That works for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Ledgewood Estates release of municipal interest in subdivision security update. Switching screens. Attorney O'Shaughnessy has submitted the attached certificate of completion in regards to. The definitive subdivision of Ledgewood Estates. This project was just recently peer reviewed. And the security deposit was released. An amount determined to be the length of roadway is still being held. And the road is not eligible to be accepted by the town for another year. The board would like to know if anything else needs to be done before they sign the certificate of completion. I am confused. If an amount is still being held, why is this certificate? Of completion being. Contemplated.
Well, like I can I can answer that. So so as. As you're aware, this past fall, we had we had filed in writing pursuant to the statute that we thought the roadway was complete and to get the the bond monies released. And the board had voted to. They needed some confirmation. You guys engaged. Environmental partners or whoever it is. And Paul Turner had paid the fee and it came back. That the roadway was in fact. Constructed in accordance with the plans and specifications. So the the issue is is we need something for the record that that shows it's built because again. This could be a different board in two years or whenever we go to get it accepted. So we need something. On record that shows it was completed and when we were drafting it up. I struggled with. The the release of the covenant part because technically the the bond monies that were put up were to secure the completion of the way. Which has been done. But you guys are still withholding the ten grand now. Should have said partial release, maybe, but. I don't know. But we need something for the record that shows the roadway is complete. So in two years, we're not. Before you saying was the roadway completed? Was it not completed? It's accustomed in other towns that that's why we're doing it. And and the money has been sent to Paul, by the way. Thank you, Kathy.
Yeah, yay.
So Mike, are you saying that other communities would issue the certificate of completion in advance?
Uh, yeah, I mean, you know, it's it's different for every town. That's the problem. And 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 quite frankly, if if. If you guys voted to sign it tonight and didn't want to give it to me, I'd be okay with that. I just.
Let me let me just. The the tail end of. Attorney Questle's comments here. Lead me to believe that this it's not. A definitive no as much as it it appears that's not the case, but in it in any event. See my comments above. About attached the reviews engineers sign off. So it sounds like. She's saying that. Which we did get the final review from the peer review. If there's some way to attach and include that as a protection for the town. So I guess I'm. Kind of asking if there's a different way we ask Attorney Questle. If she didn't fully understand what we're asking and that she's staying saying that there is a way to. Do this with the review engineers statements. So.
Kathy, are you in possession of the peer review completed by environmental partners? A year ago.
We had one. Forgot it.
Mark, can I ask you a question? Yeah. So. To to Attorney Mike. You're you're already at the one year mark and and I understand you wanting this that it makes total sense. And and I'm okay for the record that that we signed this because we should could have a holdback for fifteen dollars a linear foot for the roadway until next. We're already at one year, one year to go. So it's it's only probably next May or early June town meeting next year. The road will be accepted. It's a excellent constructed roadway, so. Nothing will I I foresee be an issue there. So if we've sent his money back, like he like he just said he did, then we're in. The town is in receipt of of the money for the roadway, the fifteen dollars a linear foot. Is that right? It was like a balance.
That's right.
So I I'm we're we're right on par with every other. Public way that we've that we've done, so. You know, I'm good with it.
And again, if if you need to attach the the peer review letter that I I have no issue with that. If you want to, if you want me to to come back in a week, two weeks, just to follow up, I'm okay with that. So I I just think it's a practice that needs to be done because, you you know. There's otherwise, there's no record of the roadway being. Reviewed and approved by the board and it's complete and all that other good stuff.
Understood. So I don't know that I'm just. Rereading through what was sent to Attorney Questle before I. Yeah, she was notified that there was just recently peer reviewed. Let us correspond back with her. Me and Kathy will talk to her again. And if you don't mind coming back to next meeting, and hopefully we we have a definitive answer on this and.
Yeah, that's that's fine. Is is Peter said it's coming up for a year. It's just, you know, we we got to go through the process. Let's let's get it all cleaned up while it's still fresh in everyone's memories. So there isn't any issues later on.
Yeah, I I kind of agree that. We're at the point where. Basically, we can. Cross all the Ts, dot all the Is and just wait until that town meeting and it's done. And it shouldn't be because it Peter, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but. How many times has there been this last minute, you know, eleventh hour scramble to get paperwork because it wasn't done prior to that?
Right. I actually felt as though Paul Paul and Mike were extremely fast because. In the back of my head, I was like, wow, they're doing all this stuff right now and we can't accept it. Till May of twenty two, but. That that's that's a subject subject. The. Nowhere in our. In our rules and regs, does it say a two year wait? And I know that this is sort of a sore subject with Paul and Mike, but. In the eight years I've been on this board, they've all been a two year wait. Maybe we do need to have that in writing somewhere. I don't want to set a just say, oh, it's just, you know. This is how we do it. That's not fair to people either, you know, so. Moving forward after this point, maybe we should have that in writing somewhere, so.
And I'm I'm okay with the the money. I know Paul is, but I'm okay with. Thing, I mean, but. But again, we're just we're just trying to get ahead of the curve. So, you know, when it when it when we do go to roadway acceptance time, everything's in place. That's all.
Understood. So, yeah, give us two weeks. We'll put you on the agenda for both on that and hopefully I have. An answer on this one for sure. And the other one shouldn't be a problem. We'll just attach the form F or the your your letter. From the contractor to the form F for the private way.
Fair enough. I appreciate your time.
Thanks for coming in.
Have a good night.
You too. All right, next on the agenda is minutes of meeting for February fourth, February eighteenth and March eleventh. I'm gonna, has. Everybody reviewed the two? For the forty three D forty three Main Street.
Yes, I did.
Yes.
So if you recall. One of the sets of meet minutes of meeting for the forty three Main Street project, we had. Noticed like Brittany Gesner's name was misspelled. And somebody else's name was misspelled, and I think Michelle made some comments to make some other corrections. So we approved them with the changes as noted. And I saw them come to the Conservation Commission and none of the corrections were made.
I think my name was misspelled.
So. I'm a little reluctant to. I I haven't had a chance to go over with a fine tooth comb. I almost want to see if conservation because I don't want to put more responsibility on somebody else, but. Joe Chamberlain over there is like an English teacher and he'll go through and. Replace commas and. So. I'd like to if nobody else is opposed. Continue the forty three D ones until our next meeting. And just visit the March eleventh ones, I think, with a regular planning board meeting.
That's fine by me.
Fine.
I just want to pull it up on my screen before we motion unless somebody else. That's when we did the floodplain by law, site plan review. Master plan, master plan. So. Make a motion to approve the planning board March eleventh, twenty twenty one minutes of meeting.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor? Barbara? Peter?
I.
Jack?
I.
And myself, I motion carries with the majority. Back to the top. You know what? I'm not even looking at the right agenda because you had it. Updated agenda to Kathy.
Yeah.
I had reorganized the board. On the agenda.
Yes, she did. Under revised.
You did.
Yep. Anyone want a new job?
I thought you were going to boot me off the board.
Yeah, no, we just had an election. And I felt it was a good time to just. Put it out there that if we wanted to reorganize, that it's not a dictatorship and that if anybody else wanted the responsibility of chairmanship that. They could throw their hat in or I'm happy to still have the responsibility if.
Yeah. We we leave chair with Mark Knox. He's done a fantastic job. And really appreciate the amount of time you have put into this, Mark, really.
I I second that. I think I've said that before. I'm obviously I'm ultimately not qualified for any of these stuff, so.
Well. Thank you for that. I appreciate it and I I we have a motion in a second. So all in favor? Barbara?
I.
Peter?
I.
Jack?
I.
Myself, motion carries. Barbara, would you like to retain the position of vice chair?
Unless Pete wants to step up and says, you know, yeah, he is timed this year.
You did a great job this past year, Barbara. I can't help but think that a second year would help even fine tune it, you know?
Okay. It's fine.
All right, so motions for Barbara Mankowski to stay the vice chair, the planning board.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor? Barbara? Peter?
I.
Jack?
I.
Myself, I motion carries. Kenneth Wells, three ten Kenneth Wells Drive. Kathy, this I talked to Nate about this today. He saw it on the agenda. He wasn't sure if they were going to be coming in or not, and I see you have a site plan. Update slash or determination.
Yeah, I don't know if you see the email that he had sent, just they are changing. Some things up over there and if you wanted them to come in. But then when I spoke to Nate, it seemed like it was. It was a little bit more complicated because it was originally permitted through the planning board and and now the zoning board. So I'm kind of not sure where that. Has that standing now.
So I did talk to Nate today about this, and I think that. It would be wise, and I don't want to speak for the zoning board of appeals. But I think it would be wise for you and and do this through John Oliveri to to send. That information for the request from the applicant to because they're looking for like a minor modification. My understanding is that that's like. They they misspelled something on the application and what they're doing might end up being a major. Change, so. We there are two things needing to go on because the planning board was the special permit granting authority. We need to make sure that we're still not because we did change that through town meeting. So that it's not going to come to us for the special permit, but we may want to see the site plan be to make sure that. With the additional space that the tenant is taking over. That it didn't increase their parking requirements and then in in turn affect parking. That said, Amy Questle should review that to make sure that it if it's a major or minor change, not I don't want to make that determination and I'm sure that. Again, not wanting to speak for him that John Oliveri would want Amy's opinion on that. So would everybody agree with that?
I totally.
Okay, so yeah, please send it along for a couple of opinions and. I would say when it is time, we would like to see him for site plan review just to make sure that the parking hasn't changed. Let's go back to the top. Just going to make mention our next meeting. Is April twenty ninth, twenty twenty one, and it's for the zoning amendments for the public hearing. That would be listed on the. Town meeting agenda. Or warrant, I should say. Kathy, could you also send all the well, there's the right to farm and the development opportunities district one? Could you send those to Amy Questle? For an opinion on. We we had some discussion during. The hospital property one about the elimination of the development opportunities district. And I think Susan Spielers has been instrumental in that. Susan, would you like to speak to that? If you're trying, Susan, you're muted. If not, that's fine. Some concerns were brought up about that one. And that if the development opportunities district was eliminated. And the forty three Main Street project that we just approved. Is then grandfathered. It's. My understanding was that it's considered. Preexisting. pre-existing non-conforming. And in turn eliminates the, the, all the special conditions that we put on it and it wipes out the special permit. Which would then be harmful to all the butters.
Wow, okay.
So I would like to see if there is a citizen's petition, they come back and work with the planning board on that because I'd rather create a zoning overlay to include only that parcel and, you know, and maybe some adjacent pieces. So it's not spot zoning, but, uh, to protect the work, the hard work that we did and to, if the effort is to eliminate another project like that, that's fine. But to do it in a legal way and we want Amy's opinion on that.
Really good, Mark. I agree with that completely. I think, you know, the, um, we certainly don't want to undo the work that we've spent so many months, you know, facilitating. And I think it, it ultimately is a win-win for the community. There's things I don't love about it, many things I don't love about it, but the conditions I'm happy with. And we worked hard on that. We don't want to see that diminished in any way. It would greatly affect our community to have that diminished.
Yeah, so you know, that, that's just a big one that being kind of a part of it, you recognize it. And I think some people from the outside looking in, they won't appreciate that one until they would really find out about it or it'd be detrimental in the way that somebody acted and then harmed them. Uh, so I, I'm glad that I was a part of that to catch that so that it's not overlooked.
Yeah. I think we all pretty much want the same things and a lot of people were troubled by the, you know, the, um, business opportunity district or the, you know, priority that they get for that six months. So I understand where the citizens are coming from, but it's real important that they understand the impact for that project. So hopefully you'll be there at town meeting to talk about that, Mark.
I will be.
Excellent.
Um, but yeah, Kathy, it, it would, it isn't, I would really like, um, Amy's written opinion on that, if we could get that, just, and I'm, if you could include me in the email. But that's all. I, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
The right to farm by law also? Did you, you, no, okay.
That's, we already have that.
No. I'm just, that, that can play out in town meeting, however it plays out, but I think the legality and the magnitude of the other one is very important. Um, and I'm sorry, but just for the record, I mean, we, we kind of went along with business tonight. And I just wanted to read out of the chat. Or it's Facebook comment, Tony Cuppy had said, please no drive-through, which Peter had stated that was already approved on the site plan, but it's not approved through the zoning board of appeals. So that's something that, uh, the zoning board of appeals, um, it's in their hands. Um, and then Barbara Standish made the comment, I can see the lights now in the back of the building from Bridge Street. Uh, now headlights, some type of vegetated fence, but again, I mean, that's something that was part of the original um, site plan.
I, I don't, you know, I, I have to say, when we approved that original site plan, I think the, the possibility was that a drive-through was going to go through, in through there, but drive-through has always been part of ZBA. It was never part of our purview. So, I, I mean, I don't know that we would have approved that plan with the existence of a drive-through. It was in, it was a hypothetical at the time. Maybe Pete remembers it differently.
Uh, it's exactly how we did it, Barbara. You're right. Um, we, we, we knew that there was going to be the opportunity for a drive-through. And we knew all along that it was going to go to the ZBA to get checked through. So, uh, it sort of splits the duties nicely, I think, uh, and, um, even more people get to chime in, you know, so the, the ZBA will handle the whole drive-through and I'm happy for that. So. They'll do what's right.
Well, it is a recommendation, I think, that we could make to the ZBA as well, because I, I think the, the vegetated buffer, it's, it's a real thing between a residential area and a business area. Um, I think it would be a challenge to put it on the left-hand side of the building because it's a business property to a business property. But on the back edge of that property, we could make the recommendation with the drive-through, um, that the headlights would impede or put light pollution onto ebony farms and the properties behind there, which are residential. And, uh, we could add that. I, I think that wouldn't hurt, be any bit painful for our roll bushes. It's not like you're asking them to, uh, rip up pavement and make changes like that.
Every little bit helps, Mark.
Can we add that to our recommendations to the ZBA?
A second down.
So make a recommendation that if they approve a drive-through window or the pickup window, that along the back of that property, they, uh, require a vegetated buffer to stop light pollution from going out the back of the property onto the residential properties.
Charlie, get second or, uh, we gonna vote?
Did we get a second? Okay, motion in a second. All in favor? Barbara? Peter?
Aye.
Jack? Myself. I was kind of pausing. I see Kathy writing, so I wanted to make sure she got it all down too.
I got it.
Thank you. Uh, so I got a couple more comments. Susan Spielers was listening. Uh, she said, we will with the planning board to get it done the right way. So thank you, Susan. And then Sean posted one from uh, Facebook comment, Nora Klein. I agree also. Problem is when the building was built, it was approved for a future drive-through. Makes some sense, uh, to have a pickup window. And I see more congestion from that process. I'm not positive it would be more congestion, but I think nevertheless, people, citizens are concerned and it's good to address them in any way we can. So I think that the, uh, vegetated buffer is a, a big help. Um, that said, again, next meeting, April twenty-ninth, seven PM. And is there any other business that has come before the planning board tonight?
Yeah, I just wanted to fill you on the housing production plan. Last time we had talked about getting some pricing from Serbit. I'm getting an update for our housing production plan, um, so that we could understand how much in compliance we are. Census numbers should be available, hopefully by this fall. They're recommending that we do not pursue an update, um, until it's been another about twelve months, so another year. But perhaps we should begin, um, discussing what we want from the project. The cost is going to be somewhere between fifteen and twenty-seven thousand dollars, depending on what we elect. So I'm going to forward this over to you and a copy to the board of selectmen, just so they understand sort of the suite of services that we have at our disposal. Um, and perhaps we, we plan on, on getting this, uh, started. You know, definitely by the fall, so we can have something by the following spring, sort of my thinking.
Okay, excellent. Um, Kathy, not that I want more work, but I don't know why it popped into my head. I think we sort of agreed that the plan of approval authority would meet quarterly if needed. Do we, are we at a point where we need a meeting or at least should we have a motion to set a date for a future meeting? You want to check on that for the next meeting? I just don't remember. I know we had some PAA stuff about two months ago and that may be satisfied that timeframe, but if you could just double check, because I don't recall. Because I know there's nothing else in the queue right now for that for hearings. So if that concludes tonight's business, I would, oh, Kathy's got one.
There are plans to be signed. The hospital plans are out there. There's four sets. Uh, just so you know, um, I know all you have to do is sign the first page, Mark, and Mark has to initial all the other pages. And there is another site plan for one forty-nine Bedford.
How many pages total in the hospital page plan? Hold your fingers up and how thick? Seventy-five pages per set?
I don't think it's that many, maybe forty.
Five sets or four? Four sets. So that's a hundred and sixty initials for me.
Like maybe you just want to initial like the file copy or the clerk's copy and then the rest, you know, I guess you could decide that yourself.
I don't mind doing it, but I, I don't, I, I guess I'm not going to stand in the vestibule to do that. I maybe take them home. So I was thinking
I was thinking that too, yeah.
Everybody else could get by and sign the plans for the hospital one, and then I'll take them and spend an evening or two initially, a hundred or two hundred pages.
There's not even a place that you could stand or sit and do it. Like there's, there's nothing.
Right.
There's not even a table, so. And there is like one additional plan for, I was saying one forty-nine Bedford, the updated plan that Xena finally dropped off.
And I did get a call today as a reminder that there was something in there for me to sign about Bella's Way or something or something else that Mr. Palucci had and
Conservation, I think. And there are a couple of bills in there also. It's all in the box.
Okay, so I'll try and get by tomorrow if I can. Uh, I won't take the plans for Main Street. Jack, unmute.
The residents have to come by and sign as well?
Yep. Okay, yeah, I'm not going to take the hospital plans tomorrow, but I'll go, I have other things to sign. So if you get a chance, go by and sign. I'd like to maybe next week, pick up the hospital plans and take them home. So maybe by, before next Wednesday, try to go to the town hall to sign everything else that's there.
Don't worry, there's a problem.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. So I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. A second by somebody. Motion in a second. All in favor? Barbara?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Jack? Myself. Motion carries unanimously. Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.